I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a good republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, a call meeting on October 20th, Tuesday, October. Establish this form, please.
Team?
Here.
Fisher Brown?
Here.
Sparks?
Here.
Olson? Mathela?
Here.
D'Ameno?
Here.
Grant?
Aye.
We're going to approve the minutes. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the regular depot bay, regular meeting of the depot bay council on October 6th, 2015.
Yes, I do.
And a little discussion from my end. Our last meeting, due to technical difficulties or whatever else, the meeting was not videoed and since it's been mandated that it be videoed, then I'm going to not approve the last minutes of October 6th, I believe, was?
October 6th.
And, uh, so other than that, the audio part was fine because it didn't have the video. All the questions, please.
Team?
Yes.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
If I wasn't in attendance, do I need to abstain?
Typically.
Yes, abstain.
Mathela?
No, of course.
D'Ameno?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
A quick question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We've had other meetings where we haven't had video. Do, does that need to be revisited? Uh, I can recall since I've been here that there were some technical difficulties in the past and we've approved minutes for those meetings. You've watched many, probably, technical video? I don't know. I don't know. It's, uh, just a note in my mind, that's all about some previous meetings. This video thing has only been a, a new thing, uh, since our new council has been... Yeah, and, uh, but there were several, you know, I think that we did have some technical difficulties, did we not, Emma? For, for a few meetings?
We had an update to this tablet that drove our connection and we missed videoing two meetings a few months ago.
Yeah, so I don't know what that implication is. Yeah, I don't have the answer for that. All I can tell you is, uh, we're staff that can figure out what it takes to, uh, to make it happen and, uh, we'll see, since it's mandated, we'll see if it happens in the future.
Mayor and council, we will, we always strive to be a hundred percent and we will continue to do so. You can't make any promises, but we will absolutely do that.
Right. Okay, good. Uh, we're gonna change, uh, change our special orders a little here, uh, the council table. Oh, I'm sorry, Robert. Hold up the council table. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the council table as presented. Second. Call, please.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Mathela?
Yes.
D'Ameno?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Team?
Yes.
Now, onto the special orders. Uh, on the A item, we were gonna have my sister's place first, however, we have our deputy with us at the moment and he has things to do, so we're gonna run him to the head of the list and this is to, uh, for the agreement of services.
Uh, but Cici didn't have something. Thank you very much. Mayor, councilors, I would have Curtis Landers with the sheriff's office. Um, so we are here, I guess, I don't know who wants to start, but I understand there are some concerns about the renewal, so hopefully I can answer some of those questions.
Yeah, our questions basically were that, uh, because you, the department's so busy, I guess, I don't really know the reason why, but, uh, they weren't having the attention in depot bay, so we wanted to get that clarified and find out if in the future we're trying to have, uh, the police.
So, it wasn't, well, we were busy, but what made us really busy is that we were very shorthanded during, and I think that there was a time between December 14th through July, we had no activity in depot bay, um, under this agreement and, um, but looking back at the schedules, I kind of know, I knew we were really short, but I just kind of wanted to go back through so I could, you know, answer your questions. We had five deputies that were training that were not available to respond, we still had two openings at that point and we had one detective going there, so we were very short, probably as short as a, yeah, I've been there 28 years and that's probably as short as I've ever seen our division be. So, we were mandating a lot of just shift coverage over time to come out, so we didn't mandate the depot bay overtime that we're putting out and, uh, I think the deputies were just working very hard because they're putting out a lot of hours just to manage shifts. Uh, in the last quarter, I see that we've done 24 hours, we're coming back, we're actually still two deputies short and one in the academy, so we're still three down, but we're a lot better than we were. Our detective division is back to full staff, so we're, we're getting back to where we should be. Um, it, it's been, and not just our agency, but almost every agency in the nation, but in the county, it's been hard to find, uh, officers anymore to fill the spots and, um, it's, you know, I've heard of some agencies lowering the standards and we don't want to go there, we're still looking for the right person to fill the spot and if we have to keep opening up to find that person, we're going to do so. So, um, we're still looking for the spots. So, right now, we're, we're in a good spot, we can, you know, honor the agreement and fulfill it, but I will also say that in the next year, we're looking at probably two to three people leaving on retirements and another person is looking to swap side because he wants to come back with his family and central organs, so hopefully we don't experience as short as we were, but there is possibility of looking at, if we're, if we're able to make that decision to wear it out.
I did have a discussion with Sheriff Dawson, uh, and he relayed these, uh, problems to me and often, and said they were in the process of, uh, of taking care of that, as we just explained. So, in the future, though, we can look forward to this, uh, surveillance that we're gonna enjoy.
The extra hours that we've been putting in, uh, you have to pay them, there you go.
Any questions? I do, Mr. Mayor. Lieutenant?
Yes, sir.
Um, at, we, we just had a public hearing on, uh, the marijuana dispensary here and all that. It was very intense and one of the things that came out of that, that I heard more than once, is about enforcement and, uh, folks worrying about, uh, depot bay not having its own police department. Uh, can you comment on how you see that dynamic changing here, uh, the way you do business here, if any, you have some experience already, we don't, so you might have a, an encouraging comment or two, hopefully?
Well, it's, it's still really new for all of us and, uh, you know, I think only time will tell where it's gonna take us as far as, um, you know, additional criminal activity, if or not. Um, if you look to our, to our Washington and Colorado neighbors and see how they're doing and, and, you know, they're still seeing a mix of, yes, it does increase, yes, it may a bit. I think the biggest thing that I've noticed in, by looking at statistics from those two states is, uh, the DUIIs for marijuana have gone up, the crashes have gone up in DUIIs, I think that was the major thing. Um, the one thing that I am concerned with, though, is, is those, uh, being a cash only since, you know, it's still against the federal law, the banks that are honoring that as far as saying credit cards with a cash only, so that makes them, you know, kind of a prime target, um, for possible robbery or burglaries, so hopefully that the, the owners establishments are taking that consideration and they're, they're looking at security and, um, adjusting the footing.
Counselor?
So, um, what you have here is for, for the overtime that was actually provided, um, we provided some really good stats. What, you have just off, off the top of your head, the, the call stats that we've seen just from regular patrol? I mean, I have to echo what Counselor Sparks said in that meeting and the letters in opposition, that's what everybody said, is we have state police and the sheriff just passing through and it was big, so maybe you can help us that you are responding to calls, maybe you're just not seeing what kind of calling you're seeing here.
We're still responding to calls, I did run the, the statistics for depot bay to see where we're, we're at. Um, we are gonna be able to monitor those calls a lot better now, we're actually switching from a new records management system, you know, process of it, so we'll actually be able to pull out a lot more data. We'll also be able to have on primary force field that puts that data so you can look at it anytime you need to do and see what statistics are occurring, basically however we can watch it and, you know, what times happening in cities, so that's gonna be another big feature that's coming. Um, but, yeah, we're still responding to calls, we're, we're getting closer to that, we're still, you know, basically making and covering, from what we've always had up here and, uh, you know, the...
I guess are we running a high call volume for you guys in depot bay? I guess I'm just trying to figure out, maybe put some people at ease out of concern that we don't have a high rate or...
The call volume that I've seen increase is more in Glining Beach, Lincoln Beach than depot bay. Sorry, Glining Beach and Lincoln Beach area has had a, a higher increase in specifically residential burglaries that we've been working on.
Really?
Um, one of the things that this agreement probably does do too and advantages is if, if we do have a problem depot bay, we can concentrate and spend this money on, on that problem and assign people during specific times to solve it too. And then, you know, so we can actually use overtime dollars for that to solve a problem and maybe have a money up there. So, that's an advantage of keeping a contract, so, excuse me.
Counselor?
Um, I've brought this up to, uh, the, the traffic committee and the traffic safety committee and, uh, other officers before, but I still see that we have a chronic and endemic problem with, uh, traffic enforcement. Um, I've, I work at Things Rich and Strange, I'm there every weekend, I've been, been doing that every single weekend with very few exceptions for almost seven years now and, um, I'm still seeing a lot of people speeding through at a high rate of speed or higher rate of speed than I know the speed limit is. Uh, I had a lady tailgating me, I was doing the speed limit coming into town just a few days ago in the evening and had a lady, you know, this far off my bumper, raising all kinds of, you know, because I had the, the audacity to do the speed limit, which tells me that she's accustomed to not doing the speed limit in depot bay. And I see, honestly, I see far, far more people zipping through town than I see people actually obeying the speed limit and I, I think that's an, an ongoing problem, I think it has been, and I think that there's been a great lack of enforcement and I know you guys have more important things to do and more urgent things to do than sit there and babysit traffic all day, but, you know, somehow we have to get through to people that the speed limit from one end to the other is clearly marked, it's 25 mile an hour, not 35, not 45, not, I have to get to wherever, so I need to, you know, I'm the exception to the rule, otherwise there's just no point in putting those signs out at all.
I agree, depot bay has been a speeding problem. Back when I was the contract deputy here in early 90s, even when it was 30, I mean, you'd see people 50 was common coming through the town. Um, you know, this agreement does, and you can see by some of the statistics, that we do do more traffic enforcement during those times, we're able to, to be out there stopping cars, but, you know, it, it really takes more than that and I don't know what, what the answer is, getting that education piece out because, um, I remember when I stopped and there were cars up here, it was, I didn't know, I didn't know even though it's clearly posted, it's like we saved, so, um, you know, it's, it's not the people that live here either, it's, it's a lot of times it's out of safe places, tourists are coming through and, and, you know, I don't know how big a sign you need to make it to get it, get it through, that people need to slow down to come through here.
I cannot disagree with you, I just want to let you know it's still happening.
And, and again, if, if there's a specific problem, a specific area, you know this one, but, you know, there were other areas that, that I can remember, let us know with this agreement that when we're up there, this is where you want to, want us to focus our time on and we definitely can, I mean, you guys are paying for this, so it's, it's one of the things that, that we can do and, and, so if you see a problem, you want it and one of the deputies up there, they can, can do that.
You know, we're actually here to talk about the renewal agreement, so...
Right, right.
And in the interest of expediency, I would say some is better than enough and we don't have our own police agency yet, though we would like probably able to see that happen in a justice court perhaps. Uh, in the meantime, I think this is excellent, uh, I think we all appreciate the service that we get when we get it. And so I make a motion that we approve the, um, uh, renewal agreement for law enforcement services with Lincoln County Sheriff's Department.
I'll second that, with the request that maybe a higher visibility or presence on the weekends throughout the year would be helpful.
Uh, I don't know if I should give you the motion.
Okay, well then, I'll just, I'll separate those two, that I, I'll second anyway.
Looking for you, there, what, what's the rate?
Fifty.
Fifty-six oh eight.
Fifty-six oh eight.
Fifty-six oh eight.
Fifty-six oh eight an hour.
Lieutenant Landers, uh, just a quick question, 'cause I was gonna ask it when Counselor D'Ameno touched on it. Can you throw out just a ballpark figure, what a contract deputy costs, like what a ballpark is, because that could be a topic of discussion at some point, if you have room?
Yeah, um, let's see, for, uh, the ballpark it runs is about 100,000, 10,000 for 80 hours, so that's two deputies, so if, you can, you know, half of this, bring 175 hours per hour.
No. Just a comment, is it lieutenant or deputy?
Deputy, yeah.
Uh, and I'm sorry, I missed your, your name.
It's Curtis Landers.
Last name is?
Landers.
L-A-N-D-E-R?
D-R-S.
Okay, Landers?
Landers.
Okay. Uh, Lieutenant Landers, uh, just, have you thought about, uh, this, this, in regards to mentioning marijuana, is that a big comment? Has it occurred to you that it, it seems ironic that the banks aren't, that this is a cash business for the, the sales of marijuana, but it, it appears that the state of Oregon could take the tax money from that, those sales of marijuana and put it in banks? Do you, do you see that as a little bit ironic there?
That might be above what the...
Wow.
Boy, you're very cool. Put me in hot seat here.
They have the whole force down there.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know how you comment on that in your house.
That makes sense, uh, now, um, I, uh, Lincoln County Sheriff's Department is, is gracious enough to, you know, offer us this contract and I'm fine with it and I guess I'm going on a discussion, I, I wondered if, uh, either Lincoln City, uh, the police department or, or Newport, do they do contract services too, do you know, anywhere?
I don't know, I know Chris Plato did at one point and they have a contract with SLETS, but I don't know about the city, I know, um, at one point Newport, city of Newport actually did a traffic grant on state, uh, traffic safety zones before, they've done that before, I don't think the present, I've never tried to do that before.
Thank you. Lady, sir.
You're welcome.
Call the question, please.
Sparks?
Yes.
Mathela?
Yes.
D'Ameno?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Team?
Yes.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Now, item A on the, on HEDDA, Cici Pratt, outreach coordinator, my sister's place.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to address, um, the city council meeting. My name is Cici Pratt and I'm at my sister's place, I'm outreach coordinator and we are grateful to be able to speak to you about domestic violence awareness month. Um, we have had, um, area proclamations, um, as well as, uh, federal and state proclamations to designate October as domestic violence awareness month. I've prepared packets for you, although, um, most of the month is already passed, we still have, um, a couple events coming up and that can be found on the left-hand side of your packets and some brochures about what we do at my sister's place. The right-hand side of the packet has, um, two documents discussing our campaign. Um, this year it is about Healthy Hearts. Healthy Hearts is a great campaign, um, to talk about domestic violence because we do know that, uh, people that have experienced domestic violence have an 80% chance to also experience, um, heart disease or a 70% chance to also, um, have, oh, excuse me, 80% for a stroke and 70% for heart disease and then even a 70% increase in the chance of experiencing asthma. So, although domestic violence oftentimes is a, um, situation that we think is, um, personal or behind closed doors, we are all greatly affected and so you'll see, um, many, um, different statistics and numbers to explain a little bit about that. On the purple sheet, it, um, covers our mission and, um, the back page of that, it has our stats, but in regards to our stats, that's kind of a vague number, I just wanted to let you know that from January 1st to October 31st, we have had 15 clients from depot bay itself. Fifteen clients that have, um, told us they're from depot bay, because oftentimes we just get clients that say they're from Lincoln County, um, or don't report and so we do know already, um, from those limited months, that there were, um, 15 clients that reported being from your city. Um, the yellow sheet, of course, has different ways that you can, um, support my sister's place and then finally a, um, fact sheet that has a bit more description about domestic violence, the definition and, um, uh, general statistics. We find that domestic violence is a pattern of coercive, um, coercive behavior toward power and control. On the back of that fact sheet, there is a power and control wheel to talk a little bit about the different types of, uh, violence that we see. My sister's place particularly, um, addresses intimate partner violence and so that would include domestic violence, sexual assault, financial violence, um, emotional and psychological violence. We have the one and only shelter in the county and, um, oftentimes we are full, unfortunately, and, um, and so we have to come up with other clients sometimes. Uh, when we're full, then we have an emergency voucher program where we can get clients into hotels, um, as needed. So, for the next part, that is, um, my presentation, but as I address a city council, I would like to open it up to questions to the governing body in case you have anything that I haven't addressed. Cici?
Cici, uh, thank you for coming and I'm a strong believer in the work you do, as you know. What worries me the most, uh, in, in this domestic violence arena are the children and, uh, I know that your focus is on, uh, intimate relationships, but from my own personal experiences, a child in a very abusive home, violent home, uh, these kids grow up and take all that baggage with them and then they have to deal with it and some of us survive just okay, uh, okay and pretty good, as a matter of fact, and others don't. How do you deal with the, the, the children in this case? Are you collaborating with another agency, is that how you do that?
We, we do often currently, um, you know, for instance, we, and you have to remember we have clients that we help out of our advocacy office in Newport and then we also have residents that are in our shelter facility at non-discussable occasions, um, and so, um, we, we are dealing with families all the time. Um, and so, um, of course, right now, we are dealing with, um, several families with children, um, including in our shelter and so it depends on how, um, we get the initial contact with, um, the, the clients, so sometimes we partner with DHS Child Welfare. Um, right now, a good, um, partner and agency is Options and so they help with parenting, um, in-home counseling, in-home visits, um, and so they've been, uh, a, a great, um, partner to work with, um, but sometimes it's also suggesting that families go to private jobs and so luckily with OHT, we can give a lot of referrals and resources to those families. Um, there's other organizations like Family Promise in Lincoln City?
Yeah.
That has, um, uh, different workshops also, um, and then there's county and state agencies that provide different workshops that we're able to give referrals to.
We all kind of...
So, oh, yes, absolutely.
Very good, thank you. Robert?
Cici, I'm curious, how many, um, I noticed in emergency self-shelters, there's 79 people, but that was, um, how many were served? How many were sheltered?
Well, that is how many were sheltered, yes, and so, um, the service number is the, um, would be who we offer the safety planning to, because we give safety planning to every client and so that would have been the, um, 900 in a month.
So, but actual, I was wondering, say, how many beds do you have?
So, we have, um, space for about two dozen people at a time in our facility, mm-hmm, um, and it's not a lot and so that's why we do have to have a contingency plan, um, and, um, although I should say, um, families don't necessarily stay very long.
Yeah.
So, um, initially we'll take in, um, a client to become a resident for two days, so the first 48 hours is kind of a, um, uh, getting to know you phase to make sure it's a good fit for the resident as well as for communal living. And if it is a good fit, then we'll offer a 30-day program and then we will do that to 90 days for a stay. If it's any longer than that and it rarely ever is, then, um, it takes our executive directors' approval to, to proceed with that. But essentially, as soon as we're getting a resident in, we are trying to get them to be self-sustainable and willing to do it.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not finding it there, uh, Cici, I missed your last name.
Pratt.
Pratt, E-R-A-T-T.
P-E-R-A-T-T.
Okay. Uh, I can call you Cici?
Yes.
Okay. Cici, um, how is, uh, my sister's place functioning?
Uh, well, we have different fundings, um, of course, we have fundraisers, we have donors that contribute, um, on their own initiative, but we also have grant funding.
Okay.
Um, city, county, state, and then, um, we're grant funded from BAWA, which is the, um, congressional, um, mandate that we also get funding from. Violence Against Women's Act.
And, uh, I noticed that we've got the, uh, at any given time, how many employees are there versus, at my sister's place versus, uh, volunteers? Is it, I mean, I see 745 hours, which would be less than one person full-time, uh, for a year, approximately, half-time.
So, right now, I have, um, about two dozen volunteers, but I only have about 11 that are active volunteers and so not all volunteers do direct services, um, and then some volunteers are on the board. Uh, we do have, um, well, we're hiring hopefully a bilingual, another bilingual advocate, which is full-time, have eight employees. We have two employees at the shelter facility alone, one shelter manager and one in-house advocate.
And just one more question, just for my own information, but here in Lincoln County, do, the, do incidents of domestic violence go up with different seasons or is it, or is the same throughout the year?
Um, we do happen to have a higher rate, um, during the holidays, um, but, you know, that's not to say, also during, um, uh, the tourist season, um, we often also see people that are coming on vacation, but then things will get stressful and out of control and sometimes, uh, one party will end up staying with us, so...
Thank you very much, Cici.
Any other questions? I know there were some questions about our politics or laws, I did prepare some, um, other, um, documents, for instance, on, um, some legislative updates. One is the sheet that was from, um, May, there were four distinct bills that were passed, one was, um, upskirting, um, if... If someone's in bleachers, it's illegal now to take pictures, but skirts. One is to protect the persons endangered domestic violence by allowing the law enforcement to obtain temporary protective orders. And another one was to protect from intimidation by defendants. The other one that passed, really important to us, is just passed this October. And that is to protect the confidentiality between a nonprofit advocate and our clients. So we have confidentiality privilege that's allowed for us. Whereas when you speak to a mandatory reporter, for instance, that is not privileged. And so we are able to have that provision, and that was just passed for October first.
So it's not meaning you guys are not mandatory reporters?
We are not. And so that was mandated by BAWA at Congress, but the Oregon State Legislative just enacted it for October first. And that's so that our clients feel comfortable to tell us everything that's going on.
Sure.
If in fact, we do find some other type of abuse that's going on, for instance, child abuse in the home, we can go about convincing them to self-report. And we can do a warm hand-up with the child advocacy center. So they're another partner that we team up with in our county.
I have one question, and this might seem very frivolous, but for anyone who's been in a situation like this, it isn't. Are you able to take pets?
Yes, as a matter of fact, that's going to be on, I think, another document that's in your packet. We have a kennel and a running line, and the kennel pulls up to four pets. But then we also will take pets inside our shelter if they're designated as service animals or for parenting.
Wonderful, thank you.
Do you guys have a plan for males, or do you service?
We do service males. Also, other than, you know, I know I'm talking more about domestic violence because of October, June is elder abuse. And that is something, Elder Abuse Awareness Month. And that is also something that we cover at My Sister's Place. So we will take in elder abuse or disability. And then, of course, men who are subject to abuse and victims. Domestic violence doesn't have any prejudices to race, creed, color, gender, socioeconomic status. And so we have had men stay at our facility. We have two different levels. And one level is A D D accessible. And it's also a great place to put different genders.
True.
It's a good question. Any other questions? Karen, can I do this with you as well?
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the opportunity to address government.
Thank you. Please, please.
On to number six, officers, reports, officer reports, or standing committees. And I may, as such, Vision Municipal Solutions, found this report.
If I may start with this, Councilor Sparks is also going to speak to his written report. But just to update the council where we are. Last June, the council authorized entry into an agreement to update the City Hall software. And since that time, we have been, we've been sharing information back and forth with Vision Municipal Solutions. We're sending them our data, and they're sending us some of their information regarding forms, et cetera. I'm personally a little frustrated. I'd like to see it moving along a little faster, but we're just going to keep moving ahead. I believe that we should have them down here installing the software here at City Hall around the end of the year. Once that installation is complete and our training, then the full implementation will occur. So it's going to be a process of a few more months, but we're moving forward, so. And Councilor Sparks and Emma, we're just at the conference that was held, so.
You want Emma to go first, or should we talk about? Okay, I'll just, okay. Emma and I teamed up at the Vision Conference in Leavenworth. And my assignment was to look at the strategic significance of all of this. And Emma's focus was to learn about the implementation of our current system, which is a priority. I felt that it would be important to put all of this in perspective in a report that each of you have. Because there's a three-to-seven-year good news report on what we just did. And it ties back to an earlier decision of the city council. In two thousand and thirteen, to put our fiber-optic substation in up at Collins so that we have the ability to provide broadband capacity in the city of Deepo Bay and connect up with the city and also Neighbors for Kids. And that was a partnership that came together while I was focused on the Neighbors for Kids part before coming here. So we had that piece, and I was just thrilled in Leavenworth to find out that we have also a second, a second piece of this. And I'll leave you with two things. And Emma, do you have the, are you able to show that website up there?
Right.
Okay, all right. So I'll just leave you with two things to keep it simple. As we go forward, and once the initial installation is completed, we can look forward to talking more about the product that we purchased as a platform, meaning that we can build on it. We can build on it with specific applications that are suited for municipalities, including a municipal court application, Mr. Mayor, that's in there. And many other applications that I'm not going into. And then, and then the, as we add to it, it's based on each individual application and how it fits into the city. So we don't have to go out and purchase new systems all the time. That's what a platform is about. It's the evergreen technology, the ability to move forward with software applications as they come out or as they exist. The second, really, the exciting part of this is what we refer to as the portal or the gateway. And the portal and the gateway connects up our platform with the fiber optics network that we have here so that we can bring this to us and we can bring it to our clients, our customers, and offer things like Bill Pay. So it's through our website. So if you bring up that website on the screen there, you'll see the city of Quincy, Washington is pretty far along with their integrated database, the same kind of platform that we're putting in. They already have, for years, they've had their own fiber optics out there. So they're able to offer client services in a very robust way. You also have in my report a copy of the website, so you can look at it and see how robust it is. But the only one that I'll, we'll share with you when you bring it up is the Bill Pay app, because most people get pretty excited about the opportunity to pay online. And to use a twenty-first-century website as the portal to be able to do that. And that's really the direction we're moving in. And that's just one thing. That's just one thing for folks to get excited about. So there's the, their website. And it becomes a website that's very, very friendly to clients. Both of our customers, our contractors, our employees who are out working in the field, who might have mobile units that could come into this. We, you know, there's just a whole menu of features. But if you look down there on it, you can see where the, you can push the, if you bring that up, you can see where the Bill Pay, push that bill, punch that, and it says, you know, go to it, and it'll say, you can see how pay and/or view bills online. And that's the only one I want to share with you. All the other stuff will come to fruition over time based on the city's needs. There's one thing, though, that we need to ask our community and have the council think about. The communities, we move forward with this kind of technology, need the input of the community as a whole. So most consider putting together a vision, a community vision committee that is represented by residents, businesses, social services agencies, and bringing folks together to be able to talk about their needs in the future, talk about the kind of technology they have today and what they're looking for, and how we can collaborate, including our local chamber of Congress as an example, and any other organizations that we have here. And connecting more effectively to systems with Neighbors for Kids or schools or anything like that. So all this is about connecting everybody, providing access appropriately to the things that we used to have to have, so many different devices and so many different systems that we couldn't get to. So I could go on and on about this, but I want to emphasize that the importance of a smooth cut over and the work that's required by Emma and Perry and her staff on the conversion, because that's a tough thing. I've been there in my career, so I know how tough that is. But once we get that going, we have a whole world, we can lead. Deepo Bay can now lead in technology. And that's pretty cool, being able to walk down to other towns and talk about our technology platform in that context that we have, stating that we are twenty-first-century stuff working for us. So that's what I have. I'll read the report, and you'll get more. Thank you.
Robert, I'm curious, Steve, so our existing thing that we just bought, that we bought into, is capable of doing all these?
Yes.
Already? And with just addition of other parts of that platform?
That's right. It's all upgradable. That's the best term to use for it.
Good, thank you. So does this platform include the website designer? Or is that something we got to do separately?
That's separately. That's an application. When we go to a more robust website, that's another application that is called a portal. And that's an area that we will eventually get to, as I understand it.
Cool.
But not now, it's just to look into the future.
Going from the voice office to the desk.
So the vision, the community vision committee is something that we need to make note about, Perry, and think about how we proceed at the right time to set up something like that so that we can start to get public input on this. And that's an important part of it.
We expect this to be functional, like, say, Bill Pay online. So I don't have to call and buzz down every month.
Oh.
Something like that.
Well, Perry, I don't know if you have any thoughts about that. But it's something that you've looked at before, and it might be one of the first ones you do. But I have no idea what kind of timeframe we're thinking about.
I can't say.
Yeah, we're not there, you know.
That's one of the future pieces, the online Bill Pay. Certainly looking at it, definitely on the radar screen, but it's not going to be one of the first.
So this program is actually up and running now?
To other places?
Other places.
No, I mean, within our.
No.
By the end of the year?
I guess that's what I was asking, is when this is going to start?
Like you say, the software that we are purchasing and upgrading to, we anticipate the Vision team to be down here around the end of this calendar year to do the installation and training. And there's, it's going to be about, I think it's scheduled in for a five-day training. We may have to close City Hall. So, like I say, a couple more months until we get to that point. Once that installation and training, now we're going to start implementing. And some of the first things we're going to be implementing is the utility billing. We're going to run at least one billing side-by-side with the old software. We go into these things anticipating glitches. So we'll see.
Transition, yeah, transition. Excited.
Yeah.
It is exciting.
Yeah. I love it.
With our auto-meter reading that we discarded a few years ago. And we'll be able to utilize the meters now. We read them currently manually, but we'll eventually be able to touch reads and speed that up.
Things like using devices like this, right?
Yeah.
So I'll just pass it around so that you can.
So is this going to help you guys with your efficiency and all that, and is that going to?
Those handheld devices will, Brady can speak to this part better than I, that will shorten the meter reader's time, but it will really shorten the data entry person's time. Instead of sitting with a book and entering every reading and every account, you just plug that thing in, done.
Kind of like what P O D does now.
I believe so. Yeah, they could bring up the address and just tick along and touch the meter, and it'll do the reading auto. And then that gets downloaded when the meter reader's finished for his whole route. You can take it to City Hall and download it in seconds.
What you were talking about, Brady, I don't do the billing as well? You just put all that information in the, in the computer and then do the billing as well?
Well, you still have to go through the process of generating bills and creating bills, et cetera, yes.
And programming every address and just want to diversion, yeah. It's a three-to-seven-year opportunity for us, which I think is a good life cycle for any technology decision. So congratulations, City Council, for a good investment decision.
Question, one question is, now, Perry, this does or does not include, I mean, I'm guessing it doesn't include data migration. As we're starting afresh, we're keeping our, archiving our own data. Is that what I'm getting?
Okay, good question. I'm kind of in the middle. We're getting different, there are terminologies modules. For instance, utility billing is a module, cash management is a module. And there's some of the pieces that we cannot bring in our archived data. Some of it we can't. And Emma, do you remember the utility billing, or is that the one we could? Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. So some of it, we're going to just keep that old backup. If we need the archival information. And other, some of it will be brought in. We'll lose some of that, but we won't totally leave it available, just not in the system.
Right, right.
This is kind of for Brady, and we had talked about some of your mapping and stuff. Does this take that into account, like all your water lines and stuff?
Absolutely, it will. We can eventually get into the distribution system and collection system and map mammals to valves.
Everything.
Brady, should I make the maps that go back eons? Maple rules?
I'm really surprised that they have those.
What we're doing with the renewal, all the maps and boundaries and all that would be in there. So anything and everything, anytime, anywhere.
Nice. Awesome.
Go away. And the last thing, real quick, is I met with the owners of the company, this is very important, quickly. They are really interested in our town because it's on the central Oregon coast. We are considered a beachhead. They will work with us more closely on that basis because they have the research and development need, and we will be able to use them as the resources as we go forward. So they'll be good partners.
I have a second, big one. Okay, thank you, Steve.
Yeah. Thanks, Emma.
Item seven, public comments. Do you have any public comments? Bill?
Okay. Thank you. Unfinished business. The second reading, proposed ordinance number 304, and ordinance amending ordinance number 3, 292, City of Deepwater Bay Harbor ordinance, revising section 2000 harbor commission and 3000 organization of the commission and declaring an emergency. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accrue this by title only, or that the reading is by title only?
Second.
Under comments, I have something. Some time ago, when council decided to dismiss the harbor commission people that were supposedly involved in some action on the harbor, I tried to impress upon everyone at that time that we're in violation of their constitutional rights and that they were entitled to due process, the same as any of us. My point being is that if we follow through with this amendment, then what we're doing is furthering that their constitutional rights and right to due process. If we elect to table this for now and await the outcome of these trials or hearings, whatever they may be, then we will have corrected one big mistake that we made. And we have, who looks this evening, our councillor, Pete. Would you comment on that, Frank? Tell us exactly what we're looking at?
Well, I was in present when they were removed from their permanent posts and whether or not that exposes you folks to any, any risk, I mean, that's, that's already a done deal anyway. And some of these things probably should be discussed in executive session, but some of the things I would say would be instructive to somebody maybe watching this, but at this stage, whatever additional little risk is available or exposes you folks to is not any greater than what that first removal was. I mean, to me, that item, you know, that, that vote was the, was the vote that actually, if there was any exposure, that would have been the vote that caused it. So this additional item, I don't see it being that much greater, but there's always risk. Anytime you're dealing with anything involving the Constitution and your public entity, whether it's free speech, whether it's due process, whether it's the Second Amendment, I mean, there's so many parts of the Constitution that can, that can expose you folks that I would prefer in the future, if we're still in a relationship, to have these things done prospectively rather than retrospectively. So my comments, if I would have made them before the removal, they might have been a little different, but at this stage, what's done is done.
As near as I can tell, councillor, we only have a few more days to go before we find out whether or not these people, either one or all, are found guilty or not guilty. Do you, in your opinion, think it would be beneficial to the council and the city to table this and tell all that?
Well, and that, you know, from that perspective, that's a little different issue. That's a, kind of what I said before, why expose yourself when you don't have to? So it's kind of the same gist of things. Might try and advise you folks, advise you folks as a group, and so if, in fact, that does lessen the risk and there is no rush to get into anything else, I don't see the problem. But not having a history on that issue, you know, I don't know what kind of, is there indictments coming now? I haven't even followed the issue that much.
Well, all these folks were indicted, but that still has to make them guilty.
Understood. But my understanding is under the, under the charter, you folks have a right to remove people at the.
Without cost.
Without cost, yeah.
But that's an awful thing, but.
I guess there's some questions here.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, I'd like to respectfully remind you that the, the people that we're discussing, none of whom I know personally, nor do I believe I have ever met personally, none of them were removed because of their legal status in any way, shape, or form related to the case that you're referring to. The reason that they were removed from their positions was because of the obstruction of the, in the ability of the city to do business, which is a continuing, ongoing obstruction. To my knowledge, there's been two continuances in the case so far, and we have no way of knowing whatsoever if the approaching date will constitute yet another continuance of this action. And I personally do not believe that the city council in making that move obstructed in any way, shape, or form these persons' ability or to, to receive justice under the law. In other words, what we did was in no way, shape, or form related to what they are accused of, accused of doing. And I have, you know, I'm, that to me is absolutely immaterial. What's material is that the city council be able to effectively move forward and not be handicapped by a majority of members on a committee being unable to do the jobs or conduct the business that they were appointed to do. And that's all. And this amendment that we're considering is in consideration of the idea that in the future, we want to prevent being handicapped, having our hands tied, so to speak, if any situation occurs that would put us in a similar position. And that's it. It has nothing to do with the legal status of anybody. And, you know, that's in the record.
Councillor Spurk?
I would have said the same thing as councillor Joe Fisher, but I want to add, add to it. One of the reasons that it's been very difficult for us to move forward with our strategic plans, and a lot of it is connected with future funding for the harbor, is not having a harbor commission functioning. And I think that that is what this is all related to, is that this is a business, we need our commissions, like the park commission, the planning commission, the salmon and trout enhancement, we need all those commissions to do the work necessary to put us in a position so that we can apply for the funding that we need and do the proposal work and gather the resources to conduct business for the city. The constitutional piece of this thing is a completely separate issue, it has nothing to do with the business of getting the city moving forward again with a, with an effective harbor commission. I don't know how this has gotten to be the same issue, they're separate issue. Their, their constitutional rights are protected. We, we have to run the city. Our fiduciary responsibility here is to run the city. We are completely handicapped right now. We have no harbor commission, and that's not good. That's not healthy for our city. We need to move forward.
Councillor Spurk?
Yes. I, the, I think we're talking, you know, there's some mutually exclusive discussions here, of the, the people that have the problem with the law, so to speak, of being accused at this point. I'm, that's, I think, a separate subject for, at least for me, because in, we passed, or I mean, we redid the ordinance for the harbor commission because having chaired, I chaired the harbor commission. And I think it's too homogenous group as it stands, the components of, you know, and so we did this in order to add some diversity to the group, okay, by statute, all right, that wasn't there before. And I would have moved to do this no matter what happened. This was an opportunity to change it because some things were happening. That being said, I do have some questions for the councillor. And I would say, generally speaking, and I'm speaking really in generalities here, because in a situation like this, suppose we, nothing, the councillor took no action, and the harbor commission met their scheduled meetings, but, or let's say harbor commission in a fictitional place met at their regular meetings while these indictments were hanging at least over four of their heads, these big public meetings couldn't, I mean, and I'm, and the public has expressed that they're upset about the whole thing, and there's lots of rumors flying around. Couldn't that put these people on trial during that public meeting? Could not it turn into a real circus, so to speak?
Hypothetically, of course. I mean, yeah, anything can evolve into suits and counter suits and things of that nature. All I'm saying is whatever risk occurred to the council back then has already occurred. So I, I try not to look back if I can help it, and I try not to advise people about what they may and may not have done right, if I can help in an open session, but hypothetically you mentioned, yes, it could be a problem for a functioning body to have people disorganized with their own personal issues. But that has to be balanced by, sometimes things do have to work their way through because of constitutional protections or their free speech right. And to decide where the bright line is in this issue, I'd have to go all the way back to what are they indicted for, what kind of evidence they, I mean, I'd literally have to retry the whole thing in my mind. And in executive session, advise you folks as best I could. I mean, it literally would be, you guys have this kind of risk versus this kind of ineffective, you know, and then at that point, it's a political decision. Once, once you know the full extent of the risks versus the rewards, then it is a political decision.
I, I see, I see what you're gonna ask, sure. Couldn't, and couldn't, I guess, a person could, could construe, come to the conclusion that really that some of the people that made the decision on this fictitional council would say, did these men and women a favor by not, that they couldn't do themselves for themselves and not expose them to, to that risk? It could be concluded.
Interesting. That's interesting.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
You may have missed your topic.
What, I want to add something to what Jerome just said. I under, we, I think we understand that it was very difficult for these folks, the four former harbor commissioners, to even talk to each other.
Right.
So how do you conduct city business if you can't talk to each other, if you've been ordered not to, not to talk to each other about the subject?
As long as we're indulging in hypotheticals, if I was advising one of those people, I would have them resign from everything. I mean, to me, protection of my client is number one. It's number one over your civic duties, it's number one over, I mean, right now, you need to focus on the trouble you're in. That's it. That would be my advice, but that's a hypothetical. But talking as a city councillor, you do, anytime you're involved with any kind of constitutional right, you always have to risk affecting somebody on that level versus the complication that may arise if you don't. And that's, like I say, you almost have to predate this back to whenever these events occurred and have an ongoing discussion with your councillor or your insurance agency or whoever it is that you, you counsel with on these kind of items, so.
And there's a fiduciary duty here to, to, to take care of the city business.
Right.
What is their constitutional right to be on board? I mean, do they not serve it well? I mean, they're a volunteer position and...
That's the key, is, is the charter does, on the face, allow that. But could you expose that to the point where you don't want any black people on a commission? You say, geez, you know, looking back after the last 20 years, they only, they only removed black people. I mean, at some point, even though you have a shred of legitimacy, you can still abuse it. So it's, it's an indicia that you're not acting in that manner, but it's only one thing that courts decide or judges decide.
With all due respect, Mr. Mayor, and understanding your position, I, I am in agreement with the rest of the council, or at least what I've heard. What's done was done, and I think it was done with a great deal of concern on our part and a lot of forethought. At any rate, if that part is done, we have no harbor commission. Councillor Fisher-Brown brought up a very good point. This, this could be delayed until 2017. We don't know. And as councillor Spurk stated, we have an obligation. Right now, we have a dormant commission. And so at least in the interim, I think we need to do something about it, get the ball rolling in the interest of the city and the citizens of this city. And so I call for the question.
All right, everybody's had a say. I just want to remind everybody that last meeting, we and the council took quite a tongue-washing at the hands of Lauren Goddard, who was resigning from the harbor commission for various reasons. And one of the reasons that he cited was the lack of the council to act on anything that they tried to do as a commission. And he's absolutely correct on that point. Another problem that's come to my, come to light is that, and I don't know, let me back up just a little bit, I don't know about the chair, the commission chair, Mike Metz, I don't know if he's going to resign or not. But what I do know is that as a result of how this was handled by the commission initially, we have now lost through resignation Debbie Metz, who's the chairman of, of the Fleet of Flowers. She has resigned as because of the handling that took place in the harbor commission. And for my own thoughts of the wording, the new wording, is I don't, I don't agree with it, and so therefore that will, that and what I just said about Lauren Goddard and Debbie Metz. So call for a question, please.
Mathela?
No.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Hi.
Teen?
Yes.
Fisher-Brown?
Yes.
Spurk?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion was to, at the second reading, read ordinance, proposed ordinance 304 by title only, so ordinance number 304, City of Deepwater Bay, and ordinance, amending ordinance number 292, the City of Deepwater Bay Harbor ordinance, revising sections 2.000 harbor commission and 3.000 organization of the commission and declaring an emergency. And at the second reading, I would ask for any comments or questions from anybody in the audience. Not, not hearing any. At this point in time, the council could move to adopt... At this point in time, the council could move to adopt at the second reading, and then do a round of discussion at that point.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the second reading. One second.
Yes.
Grant.
Hi.
Teen.
Yes.
Fisher Brown.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Mathela.
The reasons I stated some.
So the most, the ordinance 304 is adopted.
Okay, thank you. On to item B, Harbor Fuel Rate Review. Thank you, have some pleasure, sir.
We don't have a spreadsheet. Any questions? I was wishing I had more time to do a summary analysis, so I didn't do one in writing, but on the far right column is for the last three months, July, August, and September of this year, and so that's a snapshot picture. My comment on that, on the total gas and diesel gallons sold, forty-three thousand three hundred point one, in those three months, if we were, if our rate was still at twenty cents per gallon, as opposed to the six-month-old thirty-five cents a gal, per gallon that we sell, we, our revenues would have been about sixty-five hundred dollars less than they were. So that's my summary, that, that's for three months. This whole spreadsheet, going back to when Harbor fueling by the City of Deepwater Bay began in 2006, so you've got the entire history of, the top section of the spreadsheet is gallons purchased, gallons sold, both, and we separated out gasoline and diesel, and then bottom line is, below that gray stripe, the bottom section is, reflects fuel sales revenue, and the first thing we take away from that revenue is what it costs us to purchase the fuel, and that, that leaves us a dollar available for the rest of the expenses of that operation, and that includes pollution liability insurance, permits, credit card charges, fees, telephone line costs, electricity, maintenance, and then of course, neighbors, so all of those by line are reflected by here for your information.
Do, do I understand this correctly, where it says different cash than net profit loss, we're taking a loss on the fuel sales?
Yes.
Even with thirty-five cents?
Yes.
That's not, that's not good. It's, it's not moving in the wrong direction still.
Now, the three-month snapshot, that will change as we go through the year, July, August, and September are three of the four biggest sales months of the year, the other one will be in the future, those are some of ours. Will that bottom line number change? I believe it will, when we look at the end of this fiscal year, but even at the thirty-five cents, I think we'll still realize a loss, but hopefully not as much as we know that.
Sure. How, how much, you were saying thirty-five cents more per gallon that we sell at than what we buy at?
That's what we sell it for. If we buy, if we pay a dollar for the, for the gallon of fuel, we sell it for a dollar thirty-five.
Thirty-five cents more per gallon than we pay for it?
Yeah.
And what is the current price right now? I think, Mr. Mayor, hold me earlier.
Your purchase price?
Yeah, per gallon of fuel right now.
Well, that varies, of course, just like the, the, the station, but, Purry, has this failure, or rating may be available?
Not in front of you, no. There is five bucks a gallon, two bucks a gallon.
It's, it's been running much less than the prior year, I want to say it's been like a two dollars a gallon. Gasoline is higher because we're buying premium.
Sure. Well, I guess, it's weird because I recreate on lakes that have fueling stations, and they're certainly not charging that amount.
The reason, the diesel, the diesel is well within bounds, and the reason for the gasoline higher price is that, and it's, it, you know, that ethanol really...
Trust me, it'll run, no.
Well, you know about that.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, then, and then also, per delivery, the prices change as the market's changing, so, right now, down on the side, it's four...
Four nineteen, two nineteen.
Four nineteen, I think it is, and two nineteen, but with our next delivery, that could be, rates of oil going down, that could be a lot plus.
Next state over.
And then...
Two nineteen for diesel and two nineteen for gasoline.
Purry, remind me, on the, for, for the cost of, of that thirty-five cents, a component of that is our credit card processing fee, right?
Well...
Or a discount rate?
That, as far as the credit card fees, they're reflected as a line item expense that our thirty-five cents is supposed to cover.
Okay, and so, at this point in time, that thirty-five cents is a flat rate, doesn't flow as a percentage, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so, really, if we've got, the problem with a credit card fee being as a, we get charged as a percentage, let's just say it's, I'll be generous and say it's two and a half cents, let's, but let me go a step farther, because I, I'm, I'm okay at math, but not great, let's say it's three cents, okay, eight percent, yeah, three percent, so then for, if we, the problem with that is that at four-dollar gas, we're paying, what, twelve cents a gallon, all right, to process one gallon of gas on the credit card?
Well, if it's a credit card transaction.
Correct, okay, and at two-dollar gas, we're paying half that amount.
Right.
Okay, so, as the price goes up or down, that, it could, if it goes up, it really eats into that thirty-five cents, I guess, I, it, as long as we have a floating percentage that we're getting charged on credit cards, it just seems to me that we're, it, it would move us if we could charge a percentage, or that, you know, as a component of, of our cost, rather than, I mean...
I'm not going to recall all of Ross Williamson's detail on that whole credit...
Oh, you mean, to the, to the fishermen themselves?
Yeah, I have to refresh my memory of that, as far as credit card fees, it was, it was very detailed, and I honestly don't recall.
I think you would actually...
Yeah, in the context of the direction that we're going here, I, it, I think it's safe to assume that we would at least like to get to a point where there's cost recovery, break even, so we either look at the expenses and cut there to bring it in line, or we do another increase, but if our assumption and our goal is to get the cost recovery, what do we have to do now, as the next step in, in this analysis, to, to keep us going in the right direction, to break even at least, at a minimum, sooner than later?
Personally, I always look at cutting expenses first.
Okay.
When I look at these expenses, pollution liability insurance, I do not believe there will be an opportunity to reduce that, that's a, that's a one-time annual fee, and...
That seems pretty cheap, actually.
It's, it's pretty reasonable, we did, when we first got the fuel station and needed that specific insurance, it's not through our CIS insurance, it's outside, we did quite a bit of research to find the best insurance bang for the buck, if you will. Permits, we have one permit a year specific to that fuel station, it's ordered by Department of Agriculture, three hundred and thirty-two dollars. Credit card charges, that's probably, aside from labor, are probably our single most expensive expense related, because most of our singles are credit card down at that fuel station. I think, I recall about seventy percent. Why do you reduce those? I don't know.
Wasn't there also, Purry, a problem with, I think it was a legal problem with some guy using a credit card for payment, and something is...
To try to assess a convenience fee, or...
You can't pass on the fees to the consumer, right?
But, I'm not so sure, but it just depends on how the contract is written, I don't, I can tell you that, I mean, I, I don't charge more or less to people, but I don't, I, I have, there's nothing I've read in my contract that would bar any...
I, I just checked into that, and I, for, for my own business, and, and did some research and talked to a dentist who pays credit cards, he said his Visa says that you can't pass the cost on, but how they do it is give you a cash discount, so if you use your card as this amount, if you pay with cash, you receive a discount to offset, so you, you could almost have two fuel prices, one price with credit card price, and one with cash, which is a cash discount price.
And, and again, I think maybe what we should do is, now we have a new attorney who hasn't gotten to delve into this so far, but maybe we should pull out Ross Williamson's memorandum relating to all of this, because it was something about, if one of our credit cards we dealt with didn't allow something, we couldn't do it for any of it, I, I remember bits and pieces of it coming out, and so maybe we should dust that off, ask Mr. Adrian to look at it, and tell us of this.
For, for folks that might not remember, and some that were here, we already went through this with our attorney, and the attorney came back and said, no, you can't do it, you cannot charge a different price cash than you can with credit card, it's not fair. So, and, and the credit card company say, no, you can't do it.
Because they won't, you need to start...
Exactly, so it's something you need to, you know, there are people that do do it, I've got clients who do it, so I, I'd be interested to see that research, because it may be something specific to the way I think you, you folks are set up.
One other question while we're on this credit card thing, is a debit card considered cash or a credit?
The city still pays fees on debit card transactions.
Debit card, you pay the same fee because of Visa.
Say again?
Debit card, you're going to pay a fee still, I've been told debit is lesser of a fee, than credit, but there's still a fee associated, just the privilege of taking a credit card payment through Visa, that's for anyone who takes it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Now on the labor content, how do we measure that? Is that based on the amount of time in the total day that the temporary labor and the Harbor Master labor is occupied with the, a gas station, if you will, or are you recovering their entire labor cost? How, what's the math?
It's based on the gallon sold, what, again, when we first started this, selling fuel, and we sat down and we investigated, how much time does it take, the Harbor Master to fuel? How much time does it take for the clerical department to record, etc., etc., because we have to be absolutely spot on with, with following the gallons, because our gallons purchased and sold is on every year, just like our financials are, so detailed clerical work is involved, so it takes some time. So we sat down, and we all talked about it, and what we came up with was, we will charge a half a minute per gallon of the Harbor Masters rate, and that will cover all of that labor, so that's what we're doing, with the exception of, for, two, three fiscal years, we specifically hired a temporary seasonal employee just to fuel. So that temporary employee label, labor, because that employee was hired, hired just for fueling, that is not a half a minute per gallon sold, that is the actual hours worked and billing rate, so that's why you kind of see that breakout, again, on the top part of the spreadsheet, we break out the gallons sold by seasonal temporary employee, by temp service worker that we have, we used this summer, and are still using, and then by the Harbor Masters, so that's why you see that breakout, if you're looking at it, going, what's the use?
So, if you, if one, and I'll finish up my question, so if one assumes that we can't cut the expenses, then we go back to the rate part, what is a competitive cost per gallon if we were to move in that direction?
In other words, what's Newport saying for selling their gas?
Yeah, and what, what, what's the competitive?
What's the Devil's Lake sell the gas, not that price?
Well, what's we, are we less?
I think that's a very, very cheap rate.
Oh, so, so, so there might be...
So, yeah, yeah, in my opinion, I think we're a lot less.
So there might be some room to, to, okay.
Wait a minute, the same supplier owns the Newport business that supplies us.
Uh-huh, interesting.
So, I mean, how could there be a difference in the price?
Because you can set your own price.
Because it was... Well, yeah, when I'm talking about what we pay for, that was, that was my point. Go ahead, Paul.
Just, just a few things, throwing it out there, again, I'm kind of diving into this at you, but, you know, I run a business, so I look at this, and if this was my own business, I'd be pretty panicked, to be quite honest, you know, just a couple ideas, throwing it out there, don't know if it's okay or not. One, I think the, the price for fuel is pretty cheap, and the price of fuel is going down, so does that allow us a little bit of wiggle room to maybe increase our price per gallon, keep it towards that, what people are used to? Second, to get rid of some of these labor times, is it lawful to, do you sell cert?
No.
Do you what?
Have, sell, sell cert.
It's not, our insurance, our insurance company said, absolutely not.
Okay, and then just, as I'm thinking, could we lease it out to somebody, and they're responsible, they make a lease payment to us, and...
We checked out of that.
We came to that, they couldn't take a pencil out.
Obviously.
So, okay, so, Mr. Mayor, so I'm looking at the expense as a percentage of, of the, the sales, okay, and so our expense as a percentage of the sales is, is, looks at about ten point six percent, and that's what we would need to, to break even, so, that would be, ten point six times, actually, three, three, that would be, so, but we, yeah, we're losing forty-five eighteen, so why not add a little bit to that percentage, say twelve percent or thirteen percent onto the cost of fuel, and then we could, you know, that, at, at that rate, we would have a break even.
So you're saying twelve or thirteen percent is break even?
Well, I'm using, I'm using the total expense for FY fourteen fifteen of twenty-nine thousand seven hundred seventy-five, and dividing that number by two hundred eighty the total revenue, okay, that we get out of it, and... Yeah, and it comes to, that, that would come to about ten, ten point six percent. But I'm not, maybe I'm not, I'm missing something here, because I've got, I've got the difference in that loss, so are we saying here by this four thousand five hundred eighteen dollar loss, is that, where, where are we getting, what, what two figures are we, are we subtracting to get that loss?
Right underneath that gray line in the middle, the very first line is fuel sales revenue.
Right.
And then, very next thing we subtract out of that is what we paid for that fuel.
Right.